Sent from 2020. The net position is the difference between our assets and our liabilities. Essentially, it's how much greater are our assets than our liabilities? In the chart, you'll see that it's we have it broken down, the assets, the liabilities, and then the total net position between the two for both 2024 as well as 2023. 2023 is restated because due to the implementation of Gatsby 101 compensated absences. The city was required to recognize a liability for all forms of compensated absences, including those that are not paid upon separation such as sick leave. So we had to work, go back, restate our numbers for 2023 and work in the compensated absences. So that whenever we added in the numbers for 2024, we were comparing comparing like amounts. So the city's total net position is $135.2 million. The net position is broken down into three different categories. Seventy percent of that is net investment and capital assets, which are non-spendable items. These are the things like streets, sewer lines, buildings, parks, and this had an increase of 7.6 million from 2023. Seven percent are restricted assets, and these are restrictions that are placed on our funds by outside agencies and laws such as the Tabor Emergency Reserve, Development Impact Fees, and Special Revenue Funds like lottery, where we have to spend that money with a specific purpose. The last 23% is unrestricted assets, and this is the amount that's available for the city to go out and spend without special stipulations. This amount increased about 1.8 million from 2023 and total has about 31.3 million available. This slide is just a summary of the change in net position. It should gives you the revenues, expenses, and how we got to that net position. So the total revenues was 31.8 million. The total expenses was 22.1 million, and that gave us the total change in net position of 9.7. Of that 9.7, 7.5 million of it was in governmental activities, and 2.2 million of it was in business-type activities. All right, so this is getting into the governmental fund statements, which, as I had briefly said earlier, are focused on the short-term activity. So capital assets and long-term debt are removed from it. I will begin with the general fund overview. So the general fund overview, the revenue's final budget was 12.8 million, but the actual was brought in was 13.9 million for a positive difference of 1.1 million. On the expense side, the final budget was 12.7 million. The actual spent 11.6 million for another positive variance of 1.1 million. Other finance uses are usually are usually used for transfers for capital projects. This final budget was 9.7 million, but we only actually ended up transferring 1.6 million. So that gave us a positive variance of 8.1 million. This variance is due largely to the timing of capital projects. So how long it takes for the design and engineering, any supply issues or timing issues that were encountered with the contractors or anything else we ran into with the projects. Although it seems like there was a large savings with these funds in 2024, which there was, these funds were reappropriated and rolled over to 2025 to be used. So this slide breaks down the general fund into the revenue side of it. So the total revenue was 13.9 million, which exceeded the budget by 1.1 million. The largest was investment earnings, which showed a variance of 360,000 and was due to the increase we saw in interest rates in 2023, which were held steady throughout 2024. Property tax also showed an increase of 244,000, which was due to state legislation authorizing a one-time backfill payment. Intergovernmental revenues include shared revenues with state like highway users' tax, cigarette tax, and grant revenues from state and other agencies, and this showed an increase of 204,000 due to conservative budgeting. On the expense side, this gives a brief look at the different departments and how they compared against their final budgets. The largest variance by percentage was the non-departmental, which also includes the contingency fund, which we use to accommodate any emergencies or unexpected expenses throughout the year. We do not use any of the contingency funds, so this contributes to the large variance. Other financing sources include transfers in and out, insurance awards, and sales of assets. They were budgeted at 9.7 million, but we only spent 1.6 million for a variance of 8.1 million. The largest variance is the transfers out, which are primarily to capital projects and which we already previously discussed. So the fund balance is similar to the net position, but only looking at the current assets. So the general fund balance is 20.5 million. Of this amount, 1.5 million is restricted for things like Tabor Emergency Reserve and the public safety expenses from the community sales tax. 11.6 million are assigned for specific purposes by management or staff, including 8.9 million for 2025 expenses and 1.7 million for vehicle and equipment replacement. 7.4 million is unassigned, but also includes the operating reserve of 2.4 million, which represents 25% of those 2025 operating expenses. So just in case something happened, we had three months' worth of revenue or three months' worth of money to still continue operating. The remaining 4.9 million is unrestricted and can be used for any purpose for the city. All right, so we're going to move on to the community center fund. So the community center, community center overview, the revenue's final budget was 3.8 million. The actual brought in was 4 million for a positive variance of 165,000. The expenses final budget was 4.5 million. The actual spent 3.5 million for a positive variance of 972,000. The total variance was a positive variance of 1.1 million. So breaking down the community center fund for the revenue, the largest percentage variance for the community center revenue was other revenues, which exceeded budgeted amounts by 51,114. Included in other revenues are interest on leases, donations, and any other miscellaneous revenue. Other various revenue amounts include charges for services, which had a variance of 101,000, and rents with a variance of 18,800. On the expense side, the largest variance was capital expenses, which were 735,000 under budget. And again, that's due to the expense for the community center addition that we reappropriated to 2025. So the community center fund balance is 4.5 million. Of this amount, 926,000 is restricted and has to be spent on the community center. Assigned funds of 1.9 million include amounts assigned for the 2025 expenses. Committed funds of 1.6 million include 1 million set aside for facility improvements and 606,000, which is 25% of their operating expenses. And moving on to the sewer fund. So sewer fund overview, expenses were budgeted to exceed revenue by $718,000, but the actual revenues exceeded expenses by $1.3 million for a positive variance of 2 million. The largest variance by percentage in revenue was other revenue sources, which exceeded the budget by $46,000. This was due to pipe inventory stored at Public Works that was entered into the financial records as inventory for the first time this year. Investment income had a positive variance of 123,000, which was due to interest rates staying steady at the higher rate we saw in 2023 again. Intergovernmental revenues were under budget by 1.1 million due to sewer projects that included ARPA grant funds that were reappropriated for use in 2025. On the expense side, expenses of 4 million were under budget by 2.8 million. The largest expense variance was for capital expenses, which were under budget by 2.4 million due to projects, again, taking longer and funds having to be reappropriated. So the sewer fund is a proprietary fund, so it doesn't have the fund balance like we had with the governmental. It shows the net position. The net position of the sewer fund is 37.7 million. Of that, 28.5 million is invested in fixed assets, which include the wastewater treatment plant itself and the sewer lines. 1.1 million is restricted for the loan. 1.2 million is designated for equipment replacement at the treatment plant. 1.2 million is designated for capacity improvements at the plant, and 5.7 million is unrestricted. So this just shows a comparison of 2023 versus 2024. The net position increased by 2.2 million from 2023, and unrestricted net position increased by 1 million. So just a brief recap. Overall, the city's sitting in a really strong financial position. Our net position increased 9.7 million with 31.3 million being unrestricted and available for spending at the city's discretion. The general fund balance sits at 20.5 million, and many of the large variances that were seen in 2024 due to capital project transfers will decrease in 2025 due to progress and completion of several major capital projects, including 19 Road, South Mesa Street, and Maple Street Bridge. So the staff recommendation is that you approve the City of Fruta 2024 financial statements and accept the auditor's report. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you. Great job.
Thank you. This is my first one. I've been nervous all day.
Well done.
Thank you.
Before we get into questions, from a technical standpoint,
Sure.
do we have to open this up to public comments since counsel?
You can, if anyone does have any public comments on the financials.
Do you think I'd like to do that? And then we'll bring it back to counsel. So with that, does anybody have any questions? Or I'm sorry, would anybody like to come up and speak on this report at this time? And you have three minutes, and I ask that before you get started, please state your full name and address.
My name is Daniel Lemmering, excuse me, and I live at 930 Squire Court. This is short and sweet. Really nice to see that we're financially stable, and my compliments, that was very well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to follow that one? I see no additional public comments. I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to counsel.
I agree.
All right, who wants to kick off? I'm just gonna.
I have questions, but it doesn't matter when I go.
Why don't you kick us off? Yeah, you start off. I've only got a couple of comments.
I really appreciate the overview of everything and wonderful presentation. Thank you, Krista. That was a lot of good information, and it's it's nice to see that we're managing taxpayer money appropriately. My first question is, you kind of alluded to that we're in a really strong position as compared to other communities. Like what my question for the auditor, how do we compare to similar-sized communities financially? Like a little bit more substance to that, the comment of just we're really strong.
Sorry, just making sure I wasn't muted there. Really, I think it's in terms of comparing to other governmental entities. It really, you know, it, the reason I looked at and explained kind of the strength of the city's fund balances relative to its current year expenditures is kind of the the gold standard of how are we doing, how are our fund balances doing? I think it it's a comparison of, you know, apples and pomegranates. They're both in the fruit aisle, but they're, and they may be red, but they're 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 different and they're unique. And yeah, I'm not evading the question, but I'm just kind of focused that it's it's how are we doing internally as opposed to, you know, I I think when we look to some other smaller governments, they're certainly, they don't have the ability to build up those fund balances, to build up those reserves, and they might not have as robust a system of monitoring how are we doing, of ensuring that, you know, budgetary constraints are followed. And I think that's really where the city has has shined, you know, in terms of having good systems in place to ensure that resources are spent as planned, that the city is, you know, has good reserves to fall back on if there is uncertainty, if there are circumstances where, you know, funding for certain projects does not occur. I think that's, you know, in in light of some of the uncertainty as to federal funding, the city has historically not been heavily dependent on federal source funding. So in that regard alone, I think the city is better positioned than some that really rely on a lot of federal source dollars to help do some of their, you know, expenditures. And I'm thinking primarily around infrastructure-related. So does that help kind of clarify?
I appreciate that. I have a couple more questions. They kind of revolve around comments made in the management letter, Krista. So one of the items talked about the card, a purchasing card policy that we didn't have, something as well-established as we could have. How is that sitting today? Do we have a good, solid purchasing card policy?
It's a work in progress. We do. We are working on it. We have pulled from other different governments and different cities, and we're combining it into it. We don't have like an actual one that has been given out to or formalized, but it is, it will be completed by the end of 2025.
Perfect. They also talked about solo sourcing. How's that going?
It's good. We, our contracts and procurement specialist has done a great job. She's revamped the whole source worksheet, and she's got a process in place and has expressed it and shared it with all departments. And as they come in, she checks the dates, make sure that it's not past the five-year mark. And if it is, then she gets with them, lets them know, makes them go through the correct processes in order to make sure we're compliant on all ends.
Fantastic. Last question that I have is, you know, it looks like we failed to send some budget amendments to DOLA. What are the new pro, or what are the improved processes that we have in place so we can meet those timely?
Assistant City Manager Dan Karas is.
Oh, we're throwing him right under the bus right now. Dan, what do you say about, no, I'm just kidding.
Since he's the one who presents all of the supplementals to you guys at council, we're going to just have him after it gets approved by you. We'll just have him go and upload it after.
That's the trigger point with that. Yeah, that's great.
Once it gets approved by you guys and you say, okay, then he'll just go and upload it to DOLA. And it's actually something we didn't know we even had to do. Margaret has never done it, so.
Gotcha. It's, you know, I really commend you and the rest of your staff for what you do with these financials. I definitely understand what it takes to have quality financials and have them be audited and have a good opinion. I've been on that auditor side, and it's nice to see that you guys have succeeded in excellence. And, you know, some of these things, they're they're important, but, you know, we're in a good position that we can talk about just improving some different policies that need strength over time. So, but really, I think the big thing for me is well done, and I appreciate seeing the 24 audit, and I am excited for the 25 budget season to start here soon. Or no, it was already 26. Shoot. Yeah, 25 was great. I'm excited for.
We'll just start at the end. James?
No, I mean, it's all, it's all great news. The only thing that just comes to mind is, and it's good stuff. I'm happy that we're in the positive with the community center. That's obviously great. The funds that were in the positive on that, are we turning around and putting that towards paying that down? And I would hope so, but I was just kind of, if we could touch on.
Valerating.
Have the excess.
You take it, or you can take that. Yeah, so, yeah, our community center fund, we do have bonds for that facility, and they're set to expire in 2039. So one of our requirements for that bond is that we actually have to set aside the final payment for the community center to be used in 2039, because when voters approve the community center, they approved a one-cent sales tax to fund, you know, construction and ongoing operations. So in 2038, six tenths of that one cent actually drops off, and then that four tenths continues for operation. So then we can continue from from that, using that four tenths. But we have that final debt payment when it does drop off, set aside in our debt service fund just for that purpose. But yeah, that's usually spent down with current revenues each year. And, you know, our former finance director, Margaret Sell, did a great job. We actually refinanced those bonds in 2019. We had A Series and B Series. We actually dropped the A Series. So you'll start seeing the interest actually going in the negative on some of those, especially with our wastewater reclamation facility as well. So the payments are increasing, but you'll see the principal drop much more dramatically in both the community center and the sewer fund as well, just because we're finally making some progress on those. But yeah, in a very good position as far as debt and the requirements that we have for that. Yeah.
Positive thing. I would be interested, and I don't know, I mean, you guys are a number of people, you could probably do this, but it would be interesting to know when we took that on, what we looked at, worst-case scenario.
Yeah.
Better term, what we were going to be at all paid out when we were finally done to what we're actually going to end up because of the situation that we're in, to see the amount of money.
Yeah, we can definitely, we can, yeah, we can definitely pull it, I think.
What?
Yeah, it's gonna be interesting to see, though, when Junction finishes there, community center, what impact that has on ours in terms of the finances. So I want to be some, I, me personally, would still like to be somewhat conservative. In previous conversations, we've talked about a 15 to 18, we don't know, percent drop. As we see some of those people migrate, so I want to be a little conservative as that happens.
Well, and yeah, we have talked about that before, but I think that it's, because when it's the completion data that said.
I think it's 20.
Time next in 26.
I mean, it's, but I think when we do hit that, we should be very eyes-on and really collect that data and make sure that we're, what that effectively is, you know, to what degree it is.
It will have an impact.
Yeah.
How big or how small would be, it would be nice to know. Wouldn't we are there, the quicker we can get that info. But no, thank you and appreciate the spot that you got put in, and we appreciate that you stepped up and the great work that you've done. Appreciate it. Thank you.
So just such a great presentation all the way around. Thank you so much. Not only visually, but verbally. So thank you. Really, really appreciate it. I also am looking forward to budget season. I actually enjoy it as well. You may not know that about me. Anyways, I just was very impressed, and I'm not surprised that we are at where, I mean, this holds true to what I believe of our city and of our our history and how we are moving forward as well. And thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Amen.
And then I just have, Erin, thanks for bringing up the P card, because that kind of piqued my interest. And then thank you for kind of setting expectations for this, when we review this year's in terms of the funds being re-appropriated for capital projects. There was that huge wave of we can't get anything. Everything's on back order, and it just kind of delayed a lot of stuff. So thank you for setting that expectation. So before, ask for a motion. Any other questions? All right, with that, we'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the City of Fruta 2024 financial statements and accept the auditor's report. Second.
All right, first, the second. Any additional questions, comments? Seeing none, would you kindly poll counsel?
Counselor Williams, Counselor Hansi, Counselor Perser, Counselor Quigley, and Counselor Miller. Motion passes 5-0.
This has nothing to do with the motion, but thank you, Michael, also. Really appreciate you.
My pleasure. Great. You've got a great team there and pleasure to work. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. That may be the only time I remember getting an applause for an audit. So let's just enjoy this moment.
Ouch.
Let's hold on to that moment. All right, with that, I'm going to move on to public participation and consent agenda. Excuse me, this portion of our meeting is set aside for city council to listen to comments from the public about items not on tonight's agenda or items that appear on the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are those of which all conditions or requirements have already been met, and they are typically approved with a single motion without separate discussion. We welcome and value all input. To help maintain a welcoming, respectful, and productive environment, we ask that there be no clapping, cheering, booing, jeering, or sign-holding. This helps ensure that everyone, regardless of their viewpoint, feels comfortable sharing their thoughts. Each speaker will have three minutes, and we ask that you begin by stating your full name and address for the record. If you have materials you'd like to share with counsel, please hand them over. Sue, or I guess acting city clerk, I don't know, so that it can be entered in the public record and distributed appropriately. So while counsel will not be responding during this portion of the meeting, please know that we are listening, and we appreciate you taking the time out of your day to participate in this important process. So with that, I would like to open up the floor for anybody that would like to talk about something that's either on the consent agenda or not on the agenda. Please come on up.
Good evening, council mayors. Sign him as not on the agenda. Leave it to be an elephant that's in the room tonight. I speak in opposition to the statue displayed at Mulberry and Aspen Streets.
I'm sorry, I did not get your name.
I'm sorry, my name is Jason Hare.
Thank you, Jason.
Primarily on the basis of public decency, I also foresee the real economic impact this depiction would have on our local businesses. This town has a longstanding commitment to fostering a family-friendly environment. Fruta's tourism website even has a specific family-friendly page listing the chairs from Mike the Headless Chicken and the impending Fruta Fall Festival, both of which occur precisely in the part of town where this statue is at. This statue, which openly depicts exposed genitalia, is a direct contradiction of these principles. Our municipal code reflects an interest in keeping public spaces suitable for everyone by prohibiting forms of graphic acts and behavior considered lewd or indecent. CRS 187301 states it unlawful to knowingly expose one's genitals when such conduct is likely to cause affront or alarm to others. Please make no mistake. This depiction is causing and will continue to cause affront and alarm. Fruta Municipal Code 911030 states it unlawful to knowingly appear in any public place in a state of undress such that the genitals or buttocks are exposed. If such an act by a person is acknowledged as indecent and unlawful, then the display of a person depicting this act is indecent and it is inappropriate. Endorsement of such a depiction via approval or acceptance is disturbing, and I believe to be a shameful black eye on our community. The concern and impact extends beyond just these standards. People have expressed a willingness to avoid or boycott our town, our events, our businesses. My family and I are among those concerned and feel compelled to avoid the area and thus the businesses nearby. My family and I are among those concerned and feel compelled to avoid the area and thus the businesses nearby. Let us ensure that our public spaces and our public art reflect and respect the values of our residents and guests. That they do not mimic, endorse, or celebrate indecent and unlawful acts. That they inspire us to be the best version of ourselves for future generations. And that they do not exist at the expense of our neighbors working here. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Would anybody else like to come up and speak?
Deborah Moreland, Mulberry Street. Get it, get, pull it back up here again.
And if you would kindly state your full address as well.
My what?
Your full address.
Oh, 254 North Mulberry Street. Just down the block. As a longtime resident of Fruta, I am no stranger to controversy. While Jim Adams was mayor, I was, I joined the Fruta Chamber and after the director resigned, I was appointed interim director. And served for a year and a half. At that time, the chamber was very small. Because so many members had resigned during the divisive historic railcar controversy. A few years previously, I say years. Oh. Sorry. Oh, now where am I? I reached out to those who had resigned to encourage them to let bygones be bygones. And they rejoined. We picked up some new members and the size of the chamber tripled and got a new start. I bring that up because I am having some deja vu and maybe even some PTSD. Anyone else around long enough to know what I mean?
Yes.
Anybody remember that? Am I that old? Yes, I'm referring to the current controversy over the statue of the female form placed prominently in downtown Aspen Avenue by the Fruta Arts and Culture Board. I remember a time before I lived here, when downtown Aspen Avenue was pretty desolate looking with mostly empty buildings. And over the edge appeared and ushered in the bicycle age and things turned around. So I can appreciate the necessity for renewal and change to keep a town alive. But I've also seen newcomers complaining on the Fruta message board. That they don't always feel welcomed by the old timers and their younger generations who are having a harder time with change. I don't know exactly how it breaks down, but I suspect that a big part of this present contro, it is a big part of this present controversy. There may be some newcomers with more traditional values who also disapprove. Personally, I find it inappropriate for the family friendly atmosphere. I hope that Fruta wants to maintain. Especially considering the prominent female genitalia. I am asking those who are scoffing at us old fogies and even being very nasty about it. To please consider that damage that is being done to relationships, the business, the community and the image of our town. There's plenty of places for you to seek out nude art if you wish, rather than trying to force it on the rest of us. Fruta has seen how a small town can be torn apart by controversy. If you prefer a more worldly atmosphere, am I done?
Please finish your.
Okay. If you prefer a more worldly atmosphere. Perhaps you aren't a good fit for Fruta. I suspect it isn't the main reason you moved here. I asked the Fruta Arts and Culture Board to add a compatibility with the Fruta community component to your criteria in choosing art. I doubt if this board is, was established to create strife and controversy for our wonderful little town. And let this one find a place where it is better received.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Is there anybody else that would like to come up and speak? Everybody will have an opportunity.
Mr. Mayor, councilors, my name is Stephanie Tartalia and I live at 1259 East Carolina. I would like to address the controversy regarding the sculpture erected in Mulberry Plaza. In Supreme Court, Roth v. United States, 1957, obscene material as that. Quote, which deals with sex in a manner appealing to the prurient interest. End quote. Obscenity is not within the area of constitutionally protected freedom of speech or press. Under the First Amendment or under due process clause of the Fourth Amendment as to the states. Miller v. California, 1973, obscene material is not protected by the First Amendment, Roth v. United States reaffirmed. The work may be subject to state regulation where that work taken as a whole appeals to the prurient in, interest in sex. Portrays in a patently offensive way, sexual conduct specifically defined by the applicable state law. And taken as a whole does not have serious literary, artistic, political or scientific value. A business owner publicly stated that business owners have a right to voice what sculptures are placed in front of their businesses. Since this new sculpture was placed on public property, does that public have a voice or a say what is placed in that space? I realize there is an arts and culture board that makes these decisions. My question is where is the oversight? Or is this group on their own to autonomously make these decisions? It seems to me that the ultimate oversight lies with you, the city council. Given these legal precedents, it is evident that not all expression qualifies for constitutional protection. Particularly when it comes to obscenity as defined through decades of jurisprudence. The line between protected artistic speech and impersonable obscenity is both nuanced and significant. Requiring careful consideration of the work's intent, impact and the community's prevailing standards. In the case of the sculpture in Mulberry Plaza, questions arise as to whether its position and presentation. Respect these boundaries or instead transgress the communal norms that courts have ext, have constitutionally and historically upheld. Art for art's sake is merely an excuse to make it okay. Art for art's sake is a philosophy that art's primary value lies in its intrinsic beauty and form. Not in any practical, moral, political or social purpose. In other words, art for art's sake without purpose or meaning is but an empty shell. I find it especially offensive that this sculpture is just steps away from the little library installed by United Way. Holding children's books. In closing, yes, I am offended by this art placed in the Mulberry Plaza. It violates the prurient interest of this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Please step on up. You could hand those over. It'd be great.
My name is Joanne Christensen. I live at 106 Almond Circle and I've been a resident of Fruta for 22 years. Concerning the pedestrian crosswalk on the corner of Plum and Aspen Avenue at the Lower Valley. Fire Department who was hosting a meet and greet to introduce the new fire captain to the general public. There were other Fruta residents in attendance as well, and some representatives from the Fruta Police Department. After reading my letter out loud, there was some discussion and one officer who I believe was Ed Pacheco took a copy. A resident sitting next to me even suggested that I should consider volunteering on the livability committee. On March 5th of this year, I went to a morning coffee at Starbucks hosted by the city to meet some Fruta police officers. There I got a chance to visit with Ed Pacheco and asked him if there was any updates regarding my request for better pedestrian signage. At Aspen and Plum intersection. He indicated that he had passed my letter on to someone else who I believe he said was Rita. Then suggested that I should consider joining the livability committee. On April 17th, I attended my first livability committee, read my letter to those in attendance. There was some discussion from others who seemed to agree with me and some who shared personal close calls while trying to cross there. Then I handed my, a copy to Mark Mancuso. After researching the purpose of the livability committee and knowing that it was part of AARP. I felt that I would like to participate since I feel very strongly about the safety and the needs of the seniors in our community. Especially after witnessing some of the struggles my own mother, who lived with me. The last 18 years of her life had, even with my insistence, assistance. Now I try to help other seniors in our community who need some assistance. And again, hear and see some of the struggles they are experiencing. As a matter of fact, I drove the lady that I mentioned in my letter to Great Bend, Kansas in, in April, so she could join. She could join some of her family whom she hadn't seen in over 50 years to celebrate her uncle's 100th birthday. I always reassured her that I was still trying to get proper signage at the intersection where she was hit. And even joked that we were going to name it Barb's Crossing. Unfortunately, she will never be able to witness that if it ever gets approved. Because shortly after we returned from our trip, she was diagnosed with cancer and sadly passed away on July 18th. But I will continue to fight for not only her memory, but for other seniors who need to feel safe and comfortable while living in Fruta. Thank you for listening and I look forward to a response.
Thank you very much. Or anybody else like to come up and speak? Come on up, sir.
Again, my name is Daniel Emery and I'm at 930 Squire Court. My sister tells me I live under a rock and I apparently do because I have no idea about the sculpture or the controversy. But one thing I will suggest, the intersection at Aspen Street Coffee, right where you have the roundabout. I've been almost hit there by vehicles multiple times. And if you go there and you stand close to the curb, look to your right and look to your left and you'll see some beautiful things there. But they also tend to block the view of vehicles coming off of the roundabout. And Mayor Bremen, you may have to get down on your knees because you're a little bit taller to see the perspective I'm talking about. And I'm not complaining, I'm not saying anything negative. I'm just throwing out a friendly heads up. Because I've seen little kids start crossing the street. Vehicles coming off that roundabout aren't really looking at the crosswalk and all of a sudden, burp, they hit their brakes. I've almost been rear ended a couple of times. And on one of the linked documents for the agenda today, it took me to a survey, which you folks did very, very well on. Except for the managing of the, I don't know what the terminology was, but I think like the vehicular movement. I think that was at like 48%. And I think this is a prime example of the potential danger. Of having some things that are artistic and beautiful, but a little too close to the street, especially to those of us that aren't, well, six foot two. Thank you very much.
Yeah. I do feel I need to justify it six six, but.
There's nothing wrong with being six two.
You ready with your timer? My name is Thomas Wells. I live at 152 North Maple. I'd like to log yet another protest to having our addresses entered into public record. I just don't think it's appropriate in their current day and age. But until that changes, you all know where I live. Know where to find me. I didn't come with any prepared remarks, but a couple of the other commenters inspired me. I also want to echo the comments about addressing pedestrian safety. There were some notes in the minutes from the recent workshop. Which I unfortunately did not get to attend, but it seems that at least some of our design decisions are driven by where we've had crashes, where we've had accidents. And I would suggest that if we wait until we have crashes or accidents or pedestrians getting hit at intersections, we've maybe waited a bit too long. And we should be a bit more proactive about our design decisions. I also was reviewing some of the historical documents for the, the home where we live recently from 1910, when the original subdivision was first established. The road widths in front of our house on Maple Street were set at that point in history. Our transportation needs and standards have changed quite a bit since then. Paper was set at 80 feet wide at that point, Maple at 60 feet wide. I would suggest that maybe we should think about changing some of our streets to accommodate our new use cases, people in wheelchairs, kids on bicycles. We don't have horse and buggy trying to turn circles in the middle of our streets anymore. So maybe our streets should be narrower. Maybe we should figure out how to design them such that people drive slower so they don't have, pedestrians don't have to look out for cars when they're trying to cross intersections. I also wanted to just voice my support for the sculpture. I think that there are other folks that didn't attend who maybe don't feel one way or another about it or actually support it. And I think that you're hearing a lot of, I don't know, objection from people who feel very strongly about it. And I think that's appropriate. And I really applaud council and the arts and culture board for being really receptive to all of those comments. But I just want you to know that there might be a, a very silent group out there who actually feels rather supportive of it. I think that it's rather unfortunate that this has become a divisive issue within our community. I really appreciate all the comments from the other speakers tonight, and I think that it could be an opportunity for us to come together and talk about our differences. I don't think this has to be a real polarizing topic. I think there's a lot to learn from each other here. Last week I attended for the first time a group on Wednesday. That is called Living Room Conversations. It's a, a public, everybody is welcome. Let's come and talk about the topic of the night. And I thought it was really interesting to hear that particular conversation was about affordable housing. But I think that there are probably opportunities for conversations in the future about public art and what makes for obscenity and what our values and morals are. And I don't know, I would just encourage everybody and for council to set the example, continue to set the examples they have been doing. Of bringing everyone together for conversations that are, that are productive. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Is there anybody else that would like to come up and speak? All right. Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to council. So does council have any thing that they would like to bring up on the consent agenda?
I just like to say it's like, we don't make comments during this part, but later on in the meeting, we have an opportunity to chat where we may, or may not. Talk about different issues that have.
And that would be in the council reports and actions.
I guess one, just one thing on the consent is just financial reports. I think it's great that we, we were start, we saw some challenging areas financially in the financials. But we're seeing those improve and offset. So it's nice to see those are strengthening.
Any other questions? All right. Would need a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
First and second. Any additional questions or comments? All right. Seeing none, would you please poll council?
Counselor Williams. Counselor Hansi.
Yes.
Counselor Perser.
Yes.
Counselor Quigley.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
All right. Motion passes five zero.
Great. Thank you very much. We have one item in public hearing and action items. Which is hearing of ordinance 2025-18, which is a second reading approving a First Amendment to a lease agreement between. Comnet Cellular Inc., DBA Verizon Wireless and the City of Fruta authorizing the city manager to execute this lease agreement. All right. Let's talk about leases.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. I'm Mackenzie Erickson. I'm the procurement and contract specialist for the City of Fruta. It's my first chance to speak to you, so thank you very much for having me tonight. So we are here to talk about a lease amendment that we would like you guys to approve. So in January of 2019, we entered into a lease agreement with Verizon. They lease about 260 feet. Of building space and rooftop space on our Fruta Community Center. It was originally leased for an initial five. or yeah, an initial five-year term that would automatically extend for four additional five-year terms unless terminated. We did roll over, so we are working on our second term right now. And then earlier this year, Verizon actually reached out to see if we would be amenable to update the terms of the lease. They have been reevaluating all of their macro sites, which is what our rooftop site is technically considered. They've been deploying five-G microsites, which are essentially small backpack-sized antennas that can be installed on telephone poles and streetlights. So the value of macro sites has actually decreased. And the economics are no longer sustainable in the long run. However, they still consider our Fruta Community Center location to be valuable, but are just looking for a more sustainable way to maintain that site. And so currently, we do receive two-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixteen dollars and three cents under our lease. This amendment will actually drop that payment to one-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars a month, starting in July for the first five years. After that, though, each additional five-year term will see a ten percent increase. So what we're looking at here is hopefully we'll continue to be able to keep that lease on for longer because we have reached a more sustainable option for them as well. And this is also passive income that the city receives. It does not require additional personnel to maintain that site. So staff is recommending approval of ordinance twenty-twenty-five eighteen. If there are any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them to the best of my ability, and that is my presentation.
Thank you. Before we bring it back to council, need to open this up to public comment. Is there anybody here that would like to talk about ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash eighteen? All right, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to council. Any questions? Me get off the hook pretty easily. Amy?
I'm good, yeah.
All right. Then we would need a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance twenty-twenty-five eighteen, second reading, the First Amendment to a lease agreement between Comnet Sailor, Inc., DBA Verizon Wireless, and the city of Fruta, and authorizing the city manager to execute the lease agreement.
Second.
First and second, any additional questions, comments, or concerns? All right, seeing none?
Counselor Williams? Counselor Hansi?
Yes.
Counselor Perser?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Motion passes five-zero.
Great, thank you very much. With that, what? Oh, what time is it? Yes, okay, it's eight forty. Request for a bio break. Let's take a eight-minute bio break, see everybody back here at eight forty-eight. Thank you.
Had a protein bar like literally right before the meeting started and.
Yeah, just been back-to-back meetings today, literally back-to-back. I'm sure there's leftovers in the fridge.
Yes.
Can we potentially break up, if we're going to make any comments from public comment? We talk, start with crossings, because that would be a quick little subject.
My preference is to have the art last.
Perfect.
My preference is to talk about the art last.
I just think like, I think we can make some comments about traffic.
They were all basically talking about the same exact stuff, I think.
No.
No.
Guys back in session yet?
No, we still have, we have one minute.
Please, please refrain from discussing anything until you're back in session. Thank you.
Oh, voice of God, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
You see nothing.
Go away, voice of God.
You can't dismiss me that quickly.
Mad at you, you weren't at Dylan's last night.
I know, but I saw you in Glenwood.
It was pretty dope.
I bet it was. It's pretty awesome.
Jiminy Cricket up there.
I think she's even scarier now that she's louder.
That's great.
I think it's just Mary Elizabeth yelling.
All right, guys, ready?
Little, little mighty women that scare the crap out of me.
Well, I was going to make a comment about being five feet tall with all the tall person talk.
I missed that, and I'm kind of glad I did. All right, with that, the time is eight forty-seven, and we are back. And I lost my place. We are at city manager's report.
Well, thank you, Mr.
You are up.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Just a few quick updates on the city manager's report. So this Saturday morning is our first Make Your Mark event in downtown Fruta in collaboration with our Fruta Academy, but also the Fruta Farmers Market as well. We're asking residents and visitors to show up, and if interested, you know, join us for painting some asphalt art that will hopefully help with traffic calming downtown, but also create a gathering space and community space for residents in the future as well. So that starts at eight AM. Of course, not gathering in the intersection, but around the intersection to look at the art. And this is the design that we will be painting as well. So we got the stencil downstairs, going to start off with the base layer. The intersection will be closed probably starting on Friday, so we can, you know, wash off everything, you know, all the oil and everything else that's been used for preservation efforts of the asphalt, and then start painting on Saturday morning around eight and probably go probably almost all day. The good news is, so we will have Steve Martinez on the grill, serving hot dogs and.
I think just hot dogs, yeah.
You should have led with that.
Okay.
Free hot dogs downtown. And then we will also have the new block party trailer too. So come over in between painting, come, you know, playing some cornhole or any of the other games as well. So it should be great. So yeah, eight AM to roughly, I'm guessing, two to three, although we're not really quite sure how long it's going to take. But yeah, it should be a great community event, and we're really looking forward to it. Few other quick updates. So Dan, Steve, and I had the opportunity to close on half of the launch property last Friday. So that's been something that we've been working on for a long time, and we finally got to closing. So as part of our development agreement, we conveyed roughly almost half of the property to our private partner in that, Gavin Brooks of Two Forks Venture. And from there, we can start with the process and also start with the public improvements next year, and also probably some private in the future as well. So super excited to see that coming to fruition. Our public works crews have actually been out there for the past month, working with the equipment to really level it and kind of create a space where people can currently use, kind of get used to going towards the end of Raptor Road, because it's never really been a well-used space, at least for a community amenity. So we are super excited to show council, we still have it on our list, that we want to do a voluntary tour out there when we get a chance. Right now, there's parking, but they have just done so much work, and it looks so incredible. We can't wait for you to kind of see the end result of that and kind of go from there and start with the rest of the amenities and everything else that's going to go on the launch. So it's going to be.
Be able to scoop a lot of dirt into lagoons?
Yeah, you know, that's not our property anymore, so now, but yes.
Were they able to?
Yeah, and we'll continue to try that, but yeah, it's, that will be part of the next several years, for sure, yeah. And then two other very quick notes. So we do have the municipalities dinner next Thursday. So that is at the new Clifton Community Campus over in Clifton, so that's at six PM. So probably if anyone's interested in carpooling, we'll probably leave here about five thirty, five twenty-ish to get over there. And then the only other update too, I did want to also take a moment to really thank Krista Yamashita, our interim finance director, for all of her work on the financial statements. I don't, I don't think we would have met our deadline.
Oh, she is still back there. That's great, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think we would have met our deadline. This was an extended deadline, but it's just, we probably wouldn't have met it without all of her hard work. So thank you so much. Super excited to have that behind us. And now, in the next couple of weeks, we can start on budget and look at even more charts and graphs and numbers. It's going to be a lot of fun. So yeah, thank you.
We're excited.
I'm excited, yeah.
Ching names.
Yeah. Yeah, we're excited as well. But no, just wanted to take some time to thank Krista, and of course, our whole finance team for getting us through that. So that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Thank you very much. All right, that, going to move to council reports and actions. My preference would be we go around, but let's save. What, oh? No, I'm getting to that. But I asked that we save the discussion for the art on Mulberry until the very end. At that, so with that, there is a request to change the next city council meeting or workshop pushing it back a week. And I am the one at fault for this because of the Jewish holiday. Does that pose a problem for anybody?
There's no fault. It's great.
Yeah.
Yeah. The thirtieth.
Thirtieth.
We have a fifth Tuesday.
Yep. The only, if we can only get a calendar update.
All right, so thumbs up on that one. Thank you all for that. I'd greatly appreciate that.
And an anniversary.
More than happy.
So thank you.
You know?
I should do that as well.
Yeah.
Day is our twenty-fifth anniversary.
Congratulations. For us, it's the Jewish New Year's. We're going to party like it's fifty-seven sixty-two.
Mr. Mayor, we do normally just do a vote for any rescheduling meetings, so.
Okay. With that, need a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to reschedule the workshop previously scheduled for September twenty-third to September thirtieth.
First, second, any additional discussion? Seeing none, Katie?
Counselor Williams? Counselor Hansi?
Yes.
Counselor Perser? Counselor Quigley? And Counselor Miller?
Yes.
All right, motion passes five-zero.
Awesome. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate that.
Joy.
All right, with that, council reports and action items, who would like to go first? Amy?
I've, Bruta Fall Festival History Fair, please, please, please come. I'm extending a personal invitation to each of you. There's going to be some super cool stuff this year, so just want to really make sure that you guys come and see that and hear from our awesome board. They have put in a ton of work on that, and there's going to be some really neat new features this year. They're working on an oral history project with the Heritage Room. And so we'll have some stories playing as, as you browse all of the cool displays. You can hear from some of our long-timers, and the stories are great. So I want, I want you guys to see and hear all of that. I think that's all I have.
We just did interviews for that board, and kind of the feedback was, thank you to council, and these were people being repointed to the board. But thank you to council for all the support for that board, and would love to have us all come in for the history fair and spend some time.
We also learned that we have a time capsule, so we're going to, we're going to learn a little bit more about that and hopefully plan some things around.
It's so much of a secret, nobody really knows when it's supposed to be opened.
Yeah.
Do we know when it was put?
What's that?
When it was done.
This would be the mystery of this.
Yes, there's a lot of, there's a lot of mystery. We know, we know it exists. Yeah.
Do you have the times for the history fair?
Oh, you put me on the spot. I think it's like. Oh, you put me on the spot. I think it's like eleven to two or three. I'll, I'll send out, I'll send you guys that link. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. It's always right after, right after the parade.
Remember.
Three or four hours. I, yeah. I'll make sure you guys get that information. Stay tuned.
I just wanna say, I am glad to live in a community where we feel, uh, safe to have communications, uh, with each other about difficult topics. One being something that we'll discuss later, but also, um, to be able to talk about, uh, suicide in our community because the stigma, um, of that particular topic years and years ago was, uh, a source of shame um, and embarrassment. And by not, um, addressing the hard things, we sometimes make those things more difficult. So I'm glad that we can, um, as a community, express uh, hard things. We can talk about, um, disagreements, but we're still heard them. We're still neighbors and that's wonderful. That's all I have.
Thank you. You're up?
Okay.
Just going down the line.
I, um, I got to chat with the, some representatives of the livability commission that were at the farmer's market as well as the um, housing assessment. They had a housing assessment representative there and they were all just smiles and bright and were thrilled with how much engagement that they had had. And, um, the housing assessment rep was, he said that the whole day had exceeded, um, their expectations in regards to the conversations that they had. Um, so that was fantastic. I wanted to chat a little bit about the, um, the crosswalks and things that were brought up. Um, today we continually seem to be having conversations about this or public comment about this at almost every, um, one of our city council meetings right now. And as a brought up on our, um, community survey, the results there. And just, uh, confirming, I just want to reiterate to anyone who may be listening that it's something we're all taking very seriously, the city staff, the council. We're doing so many things to start to really, um, be proactive as well as address, um, concerns that are current and this this project that's coming on Saturday is a, uh, traffic calming measure that is already being put in place in a very fruta um, way. Thank you to the idea factory. If you don't know about it, talk to our assistant city manager, learn more about it. Um, but I just wanted to chat about that. And then I will have another update later.
Okay. Aaron?
Uh, I appreciate everything that we're doing about the crossings. And we've had various, um, locations that are addressed. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, or if I'm missing anything Shannon about. So we've we are concerned with, uh, pedestrian crossings. Uh, we have installed over the last year. So, um, calming measures with lights along crosswalks, we've done it on, um, Ottley and.
Cherry.
Why, let's see, Ottley and Syracuse, Sycamore area. And then we have one on area as well, uh, between, uh, some buildings. Between Family Health West and Retirement Facility. And then we have another one on, uh, paper in Sir Sycamore or something around there. So, and then of course, like was just reiterated with the one there, Aspen and, uh, Peach, just right outside here. Uh, it's, it's nice that we are, we are concerned and we're trying to take measures and, and we're I think we've had some successes with those crosswalks, uh, that come into the road to slow things down. And I think it's very exciting to see what we're doing here at Peach and Aspen to see how well that, um, how that well works, that, how well that does work and can we add it to other areas within our community to help, uh, improve safety.
And I'd add on to that also working with homeowners in terms of cutting back some of the, uh, foliage that may be blocking, uh, side paths as well.
We have a lot of beautiful trees that grow fast.
So it's gonna be, uh, this is not a one and done process. This is gonna be ongoing. Anything else, Aaron? James?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to apologize. A few of us attended the, uh, Fruta Chamber Foundation thing without posting that we were gonna be more than just two of us. And that was my fault because I was last minute addition, but it was a great event and, um, and that was, that was a cool thing to be a part of. Um, and then, uh, other than that, I was part of Red Baron, uh, their gala this year and it was fantastic. Um, it was a lot of fun and, and I, I thought they went real well for them. Um, and other than that, I think that's about it.
Mr. Mayor, I forgot to mention, we, a few of us also attended the temple, the temple tour.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Which was a really cool experience to, to have that opportunity. We got kind of a private tour walkthrough. Um, it was really, really neat to see that beautiful addition to our community and holy smokes. If you have the opportunity, get in there. It's just spectacular. Every detail, the chandeliers, wow. Yeah.
Free tours till Saturday evening, the twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh.
Monday through Saturdays from pretty much, uh, nine or ten in the morning till evening.
Amazing. What did they say? Forty thousand? They expect forty thousand, at least forty thousand people to do that tour.
How many of those are from out of the area? Cause that's already an economic impact right there.
There were, there were several. I mean, I've seen just on their, their social media, I mean, people coming from all over the place. It's, it's pretty cool.
Um, I'll go next. Um, thank you to the business incubator for, uh, allowing, uh, Fruta to be represented with some meetings with, uh, both the governor and, uh, Hickenlooper. It was greatly appreciated to be part of that. Um, also was able to represent the city with the Metro Mayor's Group over at CMU. God, it was such a week, uh, last week, I think it was. Um, yes. Um, so thank you to that group. Uh, the Fruta Foundation was great. Um, like you said, James, and a lot of the money raised goes to helping our local kids help pay, yeah, for scholarships for, uh, post-high school education, which is awesome. Um, I also did the community hospital, uh, gala as well. Uh, so that it was, it's been quite a couple of weeks.
Um, thanks for the picture of your outfit. I liked it.
That's horrible. So for the record, I was part of a flash mob. That is a one and done. Uh, piece that will probably never be recreated, I hope.
Moralized and.
I now know the Austin Powers dance.
Is there video somewhere?
I have no idea. Um, so, but with that, let's, if anybody has anything else, we will go ahead and transition, uh, into the final topic. So. Alright, so before we kind of start on this, uh, this is an emotional subject for a lot of people. Um, and I don't think, you know, my preference is this is not going to be the time or place for council to kind of try to change people's minds on the actual artwork. Um, but we need to kind of focus on the why, the process, the communication. Um, timing and kind of structure of how things get done would be my preference. So with that, so anybody wanna start off the conversation?
Do. Um, if you don't mind.
No, please. I mean, you're the representative of the.
So I would like to start. Uh, just first of all, there is a meeting, the arts and culture board is having a meeting, public meeting, um, tomorrow night at five thirty at the Public Works Building, um, to make the actual decision about, um, the future of, of this sculpture. And, um, so I wanna say that, first of all, I, I, I think that there was an incredible, um, meeting already last week. Um, with around twenty, twenty-five people of, uh, varying viewpoints who, um, we had, there was, there's always, public is always welcome. Public comment is always available at all of our board meetings. It's almost.
Board is made up of public.
And the public is made up of, of the public. Yes, exactly. Um, volunteers, all volunteers. Um, anyways, there was a great turnout. The board was thrilled, even though this was a point of um, possible controversy, just thrilled to have interaction and engagement with the community and really was thankful to hear all the voices that were spoken as to a public comment that was mentioned tonight where these things can tend to be a unifying moment. I think like everybody was so respectful of one another. Uh, everyone, I believe, walked away feeling very heard. And there was large understanding of how this even came to be. Um, and the board has, uh, let me just say as far as large understanding to how this came to be. And James was there and he could, um, echo this, I think. Um, but when the slide that was presented to the selection committee was shown, um, as far as what the selection committee saw while making these decisions, the, the public that was there all audibly was like, oh. So that's just to say, sometimes things don't, um, correlate in picture as they do in person. And so that's, that's just a little context for anyone who may want to know that context. And then, uh, the board had a great discussion where that was left was to talk with, um, the artist about three different options. Those options being to modify the, um, sculpture in some way. Um, or to relocate the sculpture or to remove the sculpture. So, so that is where the current discussion has ended. And then the conversation will pick up tomorrow in regards to a decision. But in regards to options that were put out there, those were the three that were discussed at that time. I'm happy to answer any of your questions about anything that I just said or anything else, but I just also want to say, you know, uh, one more thing that already in that conversation, the board has very much, this is only three years. It's the third year. They're continuing to learn and to take in feedback and to understand how to modify the selection process and how to have these conversations and things that work and things that don't. And, um, their intention, the board's mission is not um, to push envelopes. I'm like, that's not a direction that the city council has, um, given them to, um, go about. And it's not their intention to do so. And, um, we talked a lot about too during that time about, you know, public spaces and that those sorts of spaces are intended for everyone and what that looks like and what it may be doesn't look like and things like that. So those conversations have already taken place. And I, I really feel like, um, the board is in a good place to make a decision that reflects the direction that the city council has given before us even, like the mission for this board.
Before I open up to other members of the council, uh, I want to give a little bit more context in terms of our boards and commissions. Which is, as council, we do not micromanage those boards. We select, uh, people, citizens to be on those boards. We go through the interview process, all that. But the idea is these are citizen-led and that we do not micromanage that. We give them the broad outline of their goals. Um, they make those decisions. They make choices. Sometimes they come back to us. It depends on what it is. But I also want to point out, you kind of touched on it, this board is three years old. There's some learning.
It's this heart, the heart of Fruta program is.
It's three years old. We always talk about, we all make mistakes. Things don't always go as planned. Sometimes we make decisions based on good information, sometimes not on the correct information and things don't always go as planned. We also are a council and a city that tries to be understanding of that and show grace in that because that's what we're gonna want for ourselves because we're all gonna make those mistakes. But once again, our job is not to micromanage those boards. I think we should have some conversations about asking the board to come back with what lessons have been learned, the process, and then what communications happen. And how those communications and kind of what we've learned overall. And then once again, take that, let, those lessons. And I think there's also an opportunity to share those lessons with, uh, other boards and commissions in terms of, here's some of what we learned. Here's how we can avoid some of these pitfalls in the future. But let's be rest assured, we will kind of work our way through this and we will find another pitfall sooner or later. It's gonna happen.
It's also, oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, can add on to that type of theme that we've been talking about. You know, the, the arts and culture board created this program and what's fantastic is this board self-funds, they go fundraise to get these sculptures in our community. They don't ask for taxpayer money directly from the city. We could give that to them if they asked, but they go out and they fundraise. And I think that's a phenomenal example, uh, for other boards. Um, and and so I think, um, where do I wanna go with this? You know, the, the arts and culture board has their objectives and their goals that they're, they, they follow. Um, and I do agree with you, Mayor, that it's good to let them go through their process. We do, we do have oversight over them. But I think it's great for us to respect that process, um, as we go forward. Um, I don't know if this is the time to like, you know, one of the issues was just the presented photos when it came to decision-making. Um, do we have that available to throw up just as to give, I think, I don't know if this is a great time right now in the points to like, look at what they saw. Um,
Before we throw that up, I wanted to say one thing. So I noticed in the email that Shannon sent us, if you look on your iPad at those pictures, you can see it. That this is another part of where the contention has happened that people don't understand where that there's been these mis, miscommunications that happened. I did sit in that meeting. When we looked at the screen that they looked at, you could absolutely not see it whatsoever. And it almost looked like it was blackened out. And I'm only saying.
We are not here to be.
No, I'm, I'm only saying that that's, this is my exact looking at that thing. It almost looked like it was blackened out. And I'm not saying it was, but I'm, this, that's not my point. The miscommunication was that's what those people saw and that's what they voted on. These pictures, these are the pictures that they sent. Same exact picture, exactly. And they show it. So when they say we sent and you saw it, they believed that we, they saw it. When you sit in that room and you look at it, you didn't see it. And it's not their fault that they didn't see it. And it's not their fault that they sent the pictures that didn't get seen right. But I just wanted to clarify that. And I'm not saying that someone put a black mark there, saying it looked like it in this, and when you looked at it, you could not see it absolutely. So when they voted for it, that's what they were voting for. When this person is defending themselves that what they sent, it wasn't what they saw. And it, it was just weird. And I, it dawned on me today when I saw these. I looked at it, I said, okay, I understand why she's saying I sent you pictures that showed it. And I also understand why they say I saw pictures that didn't show it. So when he showed up there, I don't know which one you're gonna see. But for those of us in that room, you could absolutely not see it whatsoever. So I just wanted to say that before we throw them up.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can pull up the PowerPoint that was shared with the arts and culture board if.
Yeah, and it was just the screen, like a resolution thing or something. It was really weird.
Yeah, we generally don't, um, some of the boards meet at the city shop. So when we can, we try to use this room. I don't know if it's, if it's better or if it's just like a lighting.
Yeah, it was just weird. I was shocked when I saw these today. I was really shocked. I was like, oh, those, okay, now I understand. And I have to apologize because I was on the side thinking that it was very much deceptive and it wasn't to that degree anyway. See? That you can't see it there. That's the, that's what they saw. Now you can understand why every one of us sitting in that room when we saw that. Uh, that, you, you couldn't see it.
Not even in this, I mean, this is even clearer.
This is way clearer than even that. Pull it back to that first picture. Or no, go back to, to the first one and then pull it back how it was when you first presented it because that's how we all saw. And, and that's how they saw.
In preview.
Yeah, when it was, you kind of had it.
Yep, yep.
That's what we all saw. And if you look at that picture, there's not an issue whatsoever. And that's what they saw. When they, that's what they saw when they decided where to place that sculpture. So in just full, all the way around, we gotta look at it through the eyes that it was looked at and through the eyes that it was sent at. It didn't come across the same. So. Not here or there on. Either way, I do want the grace to be given on both sides because it, it, they deserve it on both sides.
Thank you, James.
Yeah. And even in the presentation, also not intentional.
Yeah.
Like, it's just how it looks in the, 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 no ill intent and no agenda. Just, that's just what it, what's happened. So the grace is, I think, well deserved and on all.
I think well deserved and on all sides.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, this is Mark Mankuso, Parks and Rec Director. You know, when presenting that, right, monitors do display different. Today in, in Fruta Rotary, when I was presenting, it, the, the presentation showed different from my screen than what was on. And you, that's kind of a risk that you run. It's really hard to make sure colors translate in different screens and. You know, there was no ill intent, there was no deception. There, you know, the pictures that were submitted. I placed, right, with all of them. And I placed on that PowerPoint presentation. And you, we were zooming in on other photos, asking what things were looking like. In that meeting, I can tell you, nobody had a concern, nobody saw. What was presented when it was installed. And I, I can speak on for myself. Like, if I would have had a concern, then I would have said something at that point, but not, at no one point did anybody. Show concerns or see that displayed in that way. And, you know, it's, it's unfortunate, you know, like. Your eyes played tricks on you, you know, however you see that, you know. Somebody said that it was grayed out, that. I didn't alter any of the photos. I didn't do anything other than place them in a PowerPoint presentation, so. You know, I tried to, to place it as much as possible, you know, where everybody can see them. And, you know, if you look at that slides, all of the art was displayed the exact same way. There was no. Real difference, you know, I used the images that they showed and I didn't change anything on those, so. You know, Councilmember Purser made it clear, you know, like. Nobody tried to deceive anybody or tried to hide anything. It, it's front center. It's there. It's that picture is displayed. It's hard to see that.
And just to, I want to make sure that people understand when I said that it looked like it was, I didn't say somebody put it. I wasn't trying to accuse anybody. But if you looked at it, it looks like that. That's all, that was just saying in the presentation, I can understand. How they didn't see it because it really did look like that, so.
Yeah.
And that was me apologizing because I felt like it was originally intended as a. Because seeing it that way and I was like, wow, it's blocked out. So that was me. Stepping back and saying, no, I saw it wrong the first time and that, that's how it went across. But that doesn't change the fact that that's what they saw and they weren't voting on the correct picture.
I fully trust, I wanna, I wanna be careful that we don't. Influence too much the, the board's meeting tomorrow. Like, I really am thankful for all of us being in agreement that. Our Arts and Culture Board needs to make this decision and, and I have full faith that they'll. Do the right thing and for our community. And they're a very passionate bunch that loves Fruta and. And I would encourage anyone to submit an application to join that conversation in the future. As I always do.
This is not an application by council. This is empowering those that we have chosen. On those boards.
Yeah, in regards, in regard to chosen, that maybe you want to discuss how people are chosen for, I mean, is that relevant?
I think it's great.
Yeah.
Um, again, to my first comment, I, I think that. We are very lucky to live in a community, in a culture where we feel so empowered. To have differing opinions and to be able to vocalize those opinions. The danger that I see. In this is when we start personally attacking people, when we start. One side or the other attacking local businesses and, and threatening retaliation. Through economic means or any other means. And so I don't want to anyway discourage. People to have an opinion and to listen to other opinions and to change your opinion and, and to see all of the sides. You're gonna have an opinion that, that you feel comfortable with at some point. And that's good to have that discourse. It's good to feel safe in our community to have that conversation with our neighbors. And, and I have faith that one way or the other, a, a good decision will be made. But we can learn something from this and I think.
We want to touch on that in a moment.
Yeah, absolutely.
So to answer the question as a ref, so everybody is aware, all our boards and commissions. Anytime there's an opening, those get, those openings get posted for at least thirty days. On social media and on the city's website, for minimum of thirty days. There are applications that get submitted and then whoever the board liaison is for that board and commission. That person and myself sit in and we interview the person, kind of go over it. Over their application, talk about why they want to be on it. Is it a good fit for the city? And those are all part of the conversation. As mayor, I get to make a recommendation for, yes, I think this person would be a good fit. And then council gets to vote on it. As mayor, I also get the pleasure, when we don't think somebody's a good fit, to also have those conversations.
And that does happen. That, that, that's common. It's not just a blanket rubber steel, but it, but it does happen.
Yes, and those conversations also happen. And sometimes the conversation is. We know you applied for this, but after talking to you, we think this board might be a better fit for your interests. So all those conversations happen. And ultimately, it's up to council thumbs up or, or to vote. It's not a thumbs up, thumbs down, but to make that choice, who's on those boards. But it is members of our community. And when I say community, it's not just necessarily Fruta within the city limits, it's within our community. Some of them, yes. So we've all kind of talked about like, what's next steps? On this and what are the learnings and what do we want to do going forward? I mean, I'll kind of kick off, which is I would like to see that board and commission say, okay. We've learned a bunch through this process and then come back to us and say, here's how we recommend we change our process moving forward. To help avoid these pitfalls is one of them. The other thing which I would like to do. Is, and it may be at the next Boards and Commission mixer, kind of talk about the process and the format. Of how those meetings are run. They, sometimes they can be a little bit casual, but there are things that have to happen. There do have to, there should be minutes taken before any formal action is done. There should be a motion, there should be a second. And then there should be a vote. It doesn't have to be as formal as this structure, but we need that. And Mary Elizabeth, I know you're listening. And we may ask you to kind of come in and help with some of that structure on an educational basis with that. I also think as part of that, there needs to be some communication. Not real sure where to go with this, but tools given to the boards. Part of the things. I'm not necessarily happy about on this one is some of what happened on social media in terms of the discussion. That took place. Clearly, we can't say you can or you can't, but I think there are lessons to be learned by people on the boards and commissions, like. Here are some of the things, you know, when you open it up on social media, here are some of the things that can happen, here are some of the pitfalls. And then. From a communication standpoint, have some education on here's recommended best practices. So with that, I'll close my mouth and let others speak.
I just want to, in regards to social media as well, I just want to, again, reference the conversations. And comments that were made publicly at last week's meeting and how beautiful that all went with. Very much differing opinions and still this very love for the community as a whole. Respect for one another. And that is not often reflected when you have differing. On social media. So I really want to encourage anyone listening online, anyone in the audience. Here and, and any of us to. Spread the idea of before, if you have a reaction, I get it. Reach out to a friend in person, talk to them. If you have a reaction and you have a concern. Reach out to a human being that maybe you can have a real sit-down conversation with before. Before going to a social media platform with maybe not a full picture. It was a beautiful example of what our town, city can be. At that meeting in person versus what was happening online. So I just really, really want to encourage. We all, each one of us are always open to conversations, sit down with coffee, sit down. Whatever, go get an ice cream cone, milkshake, whatever. We really. Encourage and love to have in-person conversations and I just want to. Maybe seeing more from me about that and maybe others, but I just really want to encourage that piece of the puzzle. I think it's important.
And there is the meeting tomorrow night and what's the time and place?
Five thirty at the Public Works Building. Again, public, always welcome, but, and public comment will be allowed there again and we'll. Go from there.
They might, they might want to consider moving it to here because there wasn't enough room. Even for that meeting the other day and this one could garner the same attention if not more.
Councilor Williams, unfortunately.
Okay.
Just because it's too late, you know, if it were a less like hot button item. You know, or if this had been talked about at six, I, you know, we'd have time, but.
Okay.
It's, it's too late to, to do that and change.
Is what it is.
Yeah.
And then also just as a remembrance for us and anyone else that, like. In saying, our boards and commissions are made up of volunteers and they give their good, hard work time. And tears to all of this and joys and smiles. And so like, just so thankful for each person who volunteers for these things and this. It's not always easy and this definitely has not been easy for them or even the staff that. Work on, on the, the staff liaisons that are on these boards. The city council liaisons that are on these boards, when difficult things come up, it sometimes can get messy for all of them as well. And so. I just want to express my deep gratitude to all of our volunteers and all of our staff liaisons on the boards and all of you guys.
Want to cut it short, but just kind of final thoughts before we.
You have something, Amanda?
Okay.
First, I'd like to say like, I really appreciate. The Arts and Culture Board for what they do for our community. They are a successful asset for us. And they've done a lot of good work. And I appreciate all the, the leadership of that board. As, especially as they go through this, this issue. I guess I, I want to talk about a couple of things. One is just, it's very interesting to see. You know, kind of some sad sides of, of social media and how we address some challenges. Because there's some nasty things that were said on both sides of the spectrum of I support, I hate, right? There's some really, just some nasty comments that I really, really wish were not part of the dialogue. You know, especially with the, the attacks of individuals or calling people, I love this one, prudia. We're not fruta, fruta anymore, we're prudia. Or. But I think, but if you really push aside the nastiness and you look at, look at. What are people trying to accomplish? It's like, what, what are they trying to do? It's like, we're trying to set our morals and our values within our community. Or readdress them or rethink about them. And, and I, I feel for the people that definitely. Have concern with statute because I do too. But I respect, I'm, I'm respecting the process to where. We can let them have that decision-making process tomorrow night. We don't take. We, we respect our delegated responsibilities to them, but we do have oversight and we do take responsibility for things. And so, you know, I just hope that we can. I think goes back to kind of what Janine was saying and maybe some others if I forgot, sorry, but it's. Just having better dialogue with each other. I think we can definitely present. Our concerns respectfully and, and we definitely saw a too large of an example of, of ways that we don't want to. And, and I just hope, I guess, I guess one thing that it would be nice, just. As some comments backed down to the board, if you can take it for us appropriately is, you know, I, I hope that they'll consider like, what's, what's the goals of? Of, what's the goals behind beautifying our downtown? What's the goals? So what's, what's the goal of the city having an Arts and Culture Board? What's the goal of having this, the heart of Fruta? Program? What are we so supposed to go after? Because if, if. If there's something that's distracting, if there's something that's economically detrimental to our community, love it or hate it. Like, we, we're trying to have a, a beautiful downtown. To bring economic vibrancy to our community. And we need to have that improve significantly, not. Dive down the other side. So I hope that they can really address the root cause, the root message of what's going on and, and, and hopefully filter out. All the more divisive comments on the whole spectrum of if things are appropriate or not, but. Because I think it really gets down to like, what's appropriate. It's not, I think it was clearly stated earlier by. What somebody came to the pulpit, it's like, there's, there's definitely some precedent of. Of what's appropriate legally, what can be in our communities or not. I don't think this is a First Amendment issue at all, because you have the First Amendment to say, I like you. I have the First Amendment to say, I hate you. Right? Not the best maybe actions, but both sides can speak and we need to respect that. This is, this is not a First Amendment issue. This is a. What's, what's the morals and values of our community and how do we want to represent that? So it's, it's an appropriate question. And, and hopefully they can. The, the board can go through and determine. What is? What's our goals that we're trying to achieve? Does this meet that?
Yeah, a hundred percent. And like I said too, I already had a good conversation about. Public space, Mulberry Plaza specifically, the intent of that space. And those sorts of things that they're already heavily considering when they're getting ready.
I, I was gonna bring that up too, but I will say that Janine did say that in the meeting, that she brought that up when she was talking to, to the group. Said, what is the purpose of that actual place where it got placed and the community aspect of it? For me, I really want to step back and, and I know that we don't micromanage, but I want to make it very clear that the buck stops here. We're very much the ones that are responsible regardless of what happens. So if this is a problem and it becomes a problem, this is who the problem's with. It's not the Arts and Culture Board. It ultimately falls on us. I like the three options that they do have that, that they're looking at considering. Whichever one of those three options that they decide to go for, I would like to have staff be prepared to handle it immediately before, so that this happens before Fall Festival. Because we don't, we don't need this, is it? But that's.
I don't want to take.
Yeah. Oh, just want, I'm not just putting it out there, we didn't, we need to be prepared to take action the, when we figure it out.
I think multiple people have had that conversation in terms of city support.
Perfect.
Or making that happen, what can city staff help with and physically do?
Yeah.
And those conversations have happened.
Another thing I wanted to point out, no one said anything about this, the same artist has another cult, another sculpture. And hasn't caused any issue whatsoever because it's not, no, no, right now.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
And, yeah, hasn't caused any issue. I wonder why. It's a naked woman as well, but it's not grotesquely a naked woman. So maybe there's an issue there that people can kind of go, hey, maybe not everybody's completely prude. There's a naked woman right there and nobody's having a problem with that. It's a very prominent position. On one of the parts of that sculpture, that's what's bothering everybody. And this might be a tough one, but I think it's warranted that there needs to be a letter. That goes out that describes what happened because there's so much this side, that side, this is what happened, this is what happened. It would be nice if there was a clarifying situation that explained at the end of this, how we got to this situation. How that they, the, what, however they want to word it. But it, it, it would be nice if there was a clarification that went out. And that's just my own personal thing.
Like the board with staff.
Whoever. But at some point, I mean, I, if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, but it would be nice to have some kind of a concrete. Scenario. Yeah, that's what I mean, yeah.
Here's an overview. I mean, I think that's part of the learning.
Saying it's a situation.
Yeah, exactly.
You're not saying like, I, I, I get that, that when we kind of have a, a wrap-up of everything, but do we, do we?
That's still part, that's public record and it's part of the public record. My concern is if we start putting stuff out until we have a complete package.
Yeah. Well, that's what I meant. That's what I meant when it's all done.
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, I support that.
Yeah, I have concerns.
No, yeah.
In peace. That's not a complete communication. That's not a complete communication. I think if as part of that public. Process. It's a, I agree that it should be part of that because that's part of the lessons learned. I think that's where it belongs.
At the at the end, yeah, definitely. So there's like a wrap up, but it explains what happened so that there's not this. Mystery later on that we're some prude, you know, council or whatever. But, you know, this is what happened and this is why this happened.
Do we care to have a communication just communicating the results of the meeting last, uh, tomorrow night?
That's a good question.
It is a good.
And it's just just factual. It is determined that we do.
It's a great question, which I don't have an immediate answer for and.
If I could, um, jump in for just a second.
Yes, please do.
Uh, so my understanding is tomorrow night's meeting is going to be recorded. So it will be available for members of the public if they're unable to attend. Um, tomorrow night to be able to, you know, watch and listen to afterwards. Uh, unfortunately, the meeting last week was not recorded. So, you know, we have the minutes and you obviously have the people who are there, but. This way, um, there's going to be, you know, an objective record available to everybody. So as far as like what ends up happening with the, uh, board's decision as to what, you know, what to do with the statue. That will, there will be a public record of that. Um. You know, it's entirely up to, sorry, somebody have a question?
Thoughts on after the meeting, like within the next twen- af- within twenty four hours after the meeting? Putting out something that's like, here was the decision. Have it posted somewhere. Here was the decision. Here's what's happening.
I think that's fine. Um, you know. This is certainly something that's controversial, certainly something that people have differing opinions on, you know, uh, differing opinions on, um. What, you know. What's? What the community wants to see, I guess, and you know, how people feel about art in general, because I mean, that's the point, right? Everybody has a different opinion about art. Uh, so I think I would just, you know, post, I don't know if the board, does each board have its own link on the city's website or is there only?
They all have their own.
Yeah.
I don't think they do.
So I think it'd be perfectly appropriate, just like if you're gonna post minutes and you'd also be posting the link to this meeting. That's happening tomorrow night to go ahead and you could post the, um, decision that was made, but it really should just accurately and just specifically reflect. You know, motion, vote. You know, and that's it.
That sounds great. Can you also just on the side say your name and what and who you are? There's some people out here I think who don't know.
Oh, I, my apologies. That's thank you. Thank you, Counselor Purser. Uh, my name's Mary Elizabeth Geiger and I am the city attorney. Appearing virtually.
Okay, voice of God.
Okay, voice of God.
And then I think after that decision's made, if council, you know. Wants to talk about like how we got here or frankly, you know, you could also say the decision's been made. And move on. You know, at that point, uh, whatever is going to happen with the statue is going to happen.
It sure be nice to get to the other side of it.
Yeah.
But lesson learned from it.
Absolutely.
Uh, I do want to just quickly ask you guys because you're you're asking for some things back from from the board at some point. Um, I think I I have no doubt that they're gonna happily, um, bring the lessons learned. They're gonna have modified, um, things for the selection process, all sorts of. Great things and suggestions that have come, especially again from that meeting last week. Um. Is there, they're likely not gonna want to go through all of that tomorrow night. Um, and then maybe have some discussion in October. I think a realistic timeline would be to. Present that to all of us from them, December, January.
My expectation would be at least three meetings, so sixty to ninety days.
Fantastic. Yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
And it also allows people to have a little bit of breathing room.
Yeah.
Be reflective and actually put time and thought into.
Yeah, so I just wanted to give them sort of that parameter. Yeah.
And I would just add, um, as to, I think it was the mayor that brought this up earlier. Uh, that one lesson, I think, just generally for the city, for the council, and then thinking about how this goes out to your volunteer boards. Those are all open meetings. They're all subject to the open meetings law. And, you know, they are. Formal meetings, even though these are volunteer boards. So I agree, they don't need to be, you know, quite as formal as a city council meeting per se. But they do need to still follow those process rules. Um, and you know, with clear delineations between. You know, here's public comment. Now we've closed public comment. Now we're talking about things and then now we're gonna have, you know, a motion and a vote. Uh, so that all that, that way it's really clear to the public. You know, what's happening. And so probably just something, I know the, um, council does have a policy for boards and commissions. You you guys may or may not be aware or remember that you have that. Um, I'm not sure how often that is distributed to folks when they come onto a board. Or if there's any sort of, you know, quick. Quick and dirty like two page, you know, here's how meetings are conducted, you know, or here, you know, here's how this you take minutes. Um, especially if you're not recording all of these meetings, minute taking can is kind of crucial. Uh, and, you know, how those are taken accurately. Uh, again, whoever's in charge of the minutes can also record the meeting just from. Their perspective to be able to write the minutes later and try instead of trying to write them in real time. So just suggestions for creating, you know, for all these boards and commissions. Easy for the public to understand. You know, easy for boards and commissions to make clear decisions and I think that makes it in the end easier for everybody.
Sure, yeah.
Anybody else have any? Things on council report actions? Last chance. All right, we have no executive sessions.
Nope.
I know you're all disappointed in that. So with that, the time is nine forty three.
Thanks.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, guys.
BOG.
See ya.
It is pretty good.